All right, we call the Council Infrastructure Committee meeting to order today on May 17th, 2018. And we have a substitute member tonight. We have Chris Ray here in place of Stacy Goodman, so we still have our committee together. But thank you for sub- subiting in and joining us tonight.
Happy to be here.
All right, excellent. So with that, we'll jump right into our first item. It is the East Lake Sammish Drainage Improvement Project Update. It's an informational item. And we have Matt Ellis, the Utilities Engineer, and Robert York, Engineer Manager, presenting. There we go.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. So, yeah, we are working on a project. Just trying to find this thing. All right, I found it first try. And let's see, there it is. I can't see it. Oh, it's right in front of me, I'm sorry. Okay, so, as you guys might know, there is a flooding issue on East Lake Sammish Parkway between Southeast 51st and Southeast 56th Street. So we last year got a grant with King County Park, or King County Flood Control to research the flooding and see if we can find a solution. So here is the study area, just north of downtown. And we realized that the majority of the flooding is right north of the BMC property, right at the confluence of the Park Hill Creek. And so we're trying to figure out some solutions that might mitigate the problem. And so, like I said, in 2017, we were awarded $70,000 to research the flooding issue and identify some key factors that contributed to the flooding, and then select a few options and develop 1% to 30% to get to further along on the design. Currently, we're preparing for Phase 2 of the grant to go out to bid in hopefully 2019 to 2020. So as part of the analysis, we did a drainage basin study and figured out all the areas that are draining to this neck of the woods. And I came up with this map here, and it also identifies three points where we've measured and calculated flows. And we've realized that the majority of the flows are coming down from Park Hill Creek and entering the basin just south of 51st Street. And you can see that the flooding definitely gets pretty severe under the 100-year storm at that location. So then we figured out some, we took a look at all the record drawings in the area and figured out that there's three ditches that are the culprit. There's the east ditch, which is owned by the City of Issaquah, and that is on the east side of East Lake Sammish Parkway, and that connects to the Park Hill Creek. And then that flows through three 24-inch diameter pipes to the middle culvert, which is the one that typically, or middle ditch, which is the one that typically floods, and that's on the west side of the road. And that also flows through another 48-inch diameter pipe under the trail to a ditch, which goes underneath 51st Street. So we did a model of the entire system with all the connecting catch basins and connecting ponds, and kind of figured out what we could do. Some of the key factors is vegetation, that's one of the main things. And no matter what we do, we realize we need to remove the vegetation in the area. We also realized that there's some severely undersized culverts that might need to be upsized. The roadway is extremely low in the area, and the groundwater is right there, right below, so the water doesn't have room to infiltrate. So it just over tops and pops over the road, usually in the southbound lane. And during the winter, if you've noticed, it can flood that southbound lane quite often. So there's also just a large amount of water entering the, entered in the ditch. So, like I said, the main thing we need to do is partner with King County Parks, which we've already done, to remove a lot of that vegetation. It is a bit tricky, it is a wetland, it's also connected to a stream that has fish in it, so we need, we are sensitive to that, and we need to get an HPA permit and all kinds of other environmental permits as we go forward on that. We're also partnering with King County Parks because they are the owner of that ditch on the west side of the road. So we identified three alternatives that we could use to fix the problem. The first was upsize a few detention ponds and create a few new ones at the tune of $3.6 million. And the concern of this is that if maintenance isn't kept up, these can fill in, and they don't, won't work as well as they, they're designed to. And it's also a very expensive project that requires land acquisition and just a lot of, lot of space. The second alternative was one that we pursued a few years ago, which was a pump station at the intersection of Southeast 56th and East Lake Sammish Parkway. And that would then distribute some of the flows due west to Issaquah Creek and then out to Lake Sammish. The problem with this one is that it does require a lot of operation help in case you need to replace the pumps or clean the line or whatever. It does require a lot of work, and also electricity to manage those pumps. So we also didn't like this option as, as what we wanted. The preferred option is to upsize two culverts, one at Southeast 51st and one at East Lake Sammish Parkway Trail, so they're fish-passable. And they can handle a lot of those flows from the creek and then from the surrounding area. This does require, again, additional permitting, so it will take a little bit of time to go through the process before we can actually fix the problem. So we're probably going to be able to go out to construction, provided we have funding, in 2020. So like I said, we are in Phase 2 of the design process, where we're pursuing an additional funding for $200,000 to complete the design for our preferred alternative, to complete design, environmental permitting, survey, and ge- geotechnical exploration. We were budgeted $84,000 in, for Phase 1, and in 2019, we have $1.2 million for the final design and construction, which we will probably have to move to 2020. That's it? Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I wondered if the, so the preferred action is to upsize the culverts, and I wondered, have they, over time, erosion made them smaller, or was it just probably that they were too small to be, to be, rather?
That's a good question. So, I'm gonna go back a little bit. So what it shows here, I do have a mouse. So right now, what's going on is it's going through some pretty small pipes, they're only 48-inch diameters, they're, they're too small under the current conditions, and they go at 90-degree bends to each other. I lost my mouse again. So basically, they're going up, taking a 90-degree turn, and then another 90-degree turn, which really slows down the water. So it's, it's really just backing up during a high-storm event. And what we've noticed over the last few years is that we're getting a lot more water, a lot quicker than we used to when these were designed. So, we're getting a lot higher concentration, and it's just backing up water too quickly. That coupled with a lot of vegetation growing in those ditches, and it needs to be continually maintained to work as it was designed.
Just a couple of quick questions. I thought it was fascinating. So the two right, or two right-angle turns makes a ton of sense that that would slow the water down. Is there an option to see if you can improve throughput by just straightening out the pipes there instead of the little jig-jag?
We thought about that, and that could still be an option. It would still be a culvert, and it would be a little bit longer at Southeast 51st Street. There is a signal right there, so, and a couple utilities that would be in the way. So that's still definitely an option that we were pursuing. And it's, we're working with our consultant to look into that.
And then just another question. Where does, where does this water actually, eventually end up? I know you're gonna say the lake, but how does it get there?
So just north of here, and I apologize if I didn't bring, I do have a picture. So, right up in here, it goes into a floodplain just north of this complex, and it just gets really wide and open and flat.
Okay, so it gives us a chance to disperse and go through all sorts of natural purification, all sorts of stuff like that?
It does. There's a few beaver, beaver dams that does do clog it up, but they realize that it's not too substantial, but it does have time to kind of disperse.
And this last question is really just out of idle curiosity. So the problem with the vegetation in the, in the culvert is it really just slows the water down, or, and it cuts down?
Yes, that's a really good question. So really what's going on is, the vegetation's just growing up, and it's also collecting sediment as it goes, and it's just basically providing less room for the water to hold, to stay there. And so we just have less and less capacity in that ditch, so it's just, there's just no room for it.
I said that was the last question, I have one more. On the budget in 2019, which you think might be a 2020 thing, you've got $1.2 million kind of allocated, and we're engineering estimates now, it's about 1.5. Does that mean we'll, we'll hear back from you?
That's correct. There is, also with the budget, we, or with the potential grant application and a few others, we might be able to help with that.
Thank you.
Excuse me if I could add to that. With the update in 2019 of the CIP, we'll be adjusting the cost of the projects and so forth to show the more current reflected costs.
Great, thanks, Holm. Go ahead.
I am, I am interested that this will be a fish-bearing culvert, and I wonder, is there anything other than the size that makes it a good fish-bearing culvert? Anything in the design?
Yeah. So when we go into more of the, the actual design, we'll be analyzing how tall the culvert can be, so you can have a little bit of headwater. And you also want rocks and things inside the culvert. It's no longer just a metal pipe that allows water through. Now it's usually a big box, almost kind of like a bridge, where the bottom is kind of natural ground, so fish can use for habitat and slow that, slow them down, and they can hang out in the shade, or they can wait out turbulent water. So, a culvert is a, fish-bearing culverts are definitely becoming a little more complex than they used to be.
So I got a couple of technical questions. It sounds like two particular pipes, and so I want to know the location of existing pipes and planned pipes. I'm not quite sure I can picture the project yet, so maybe you can put a screen up there. And so there's, you said one under the trail and one under 51st?
That's correct, so.
Under the road, like where the crosswalk is?
Yep, that's, that's basically it, so just.
That big one there, what's the size of the pipe there right now?
The existing one's 48-inch.
48 under the rock?
Correct.
And that's a straight shot pipe?
That's a straight shot pipe.
And now where's the bend? Because I thought the one was like just before that, coming from one ditch to another?
It is, it is. But we might move it, we can just leave that one in the trail, we don't need to put it in the same spot, and it just helps with capacity. So we might put that closer to the creek right here, where that crosses the roadway.
That'd just be adding an additional pipe?
Correct.
And so that, yeah, okay, so leave that one, because I, well, a couple of questions. We, we just rebuilt that trail, the county did.
Yep.
And when they rebuilt it, they should have upsized any culverts that needed upsize at the time. So I'm surprised that we're sitting here saying we have a too small a culvert under that trail that just got rebuilt. So, why, why, how did that get missed, I guess, is my question, because we should've done that at the time?
That's a good question, and I'm not sure at the moment why it was built the way it was.
Okay. Okay, and so that, and that pipe, the, just, and that's just before 51st that goes from the middle ditch to the west ditch, right? That makes the two turn.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, and how big is that pipe?
That's a 48-inch.
48 also, so 40 into, and then it's a, it opens into the ditch, and then the ditch to the culvert again.
Yep, it's complicated, but yes, it does.
I know, I run the trail all the time, so I'm, I'm picturing it all in my head, I've, I've seen it all. Okay, so basically, it's, yeah, it's too big. Now, when you say fish-bearing, this opens up into a wetland before it gets to the lake.
That's correct.
So my question is, is this really an accessible creek? If it's a flat wetland, is it something the fish can get through or not to get up to this point? If it's, it's truly a spread-out wetland, you can't usually swim too well through that area.
That's a good question. I believe, and I'm not 100% sure, that people have seen fish in the ditch itself, so.
Because I'd be wanting to verify before I spend extra money on a fish-bearing stream, that it's not a fish-bearing stream.
Absolutely, 100%.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do some environmental studies, and that'll be one of the questions in it. Is it truly a fish-bearing stream, so that you need to have passage through the culvert? That's a real good question.
Yeah, because once you go through a wetland, you usually lose that opportunity. Anyway, all right. Any other questions? Okay, this is just information only, so we're clear. Is there any public comment on this topic? I hear none. At this point, it's just informational. We're gonna take this, we're gonna wait to hear more from you as the process goes on. You're gonna continue to look for grant money to fund this and see where it goes. We definitely have some flooding on the road that we have to try to deal with here at some point, and we have some options.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Of course.
All right. Next up?
It's me again.
It's you again, all right. But this is an action item, it's AB 7558. It's a 2018 curb ramp enhancement project, so you're gonna look for some action at the end of this topic?
That's correct.
Okay, so why don't you go ahead again?
All righty. Well, we went out to bid for a curb ramp replacement project under our Complete Streets budget, to replace a number of curb ramps throughout the city in preparation for our annual overlay program. The Westerland excavation was our only bidder, as well as our low bidder, and so we are recommending to award the contract to Westerland. We do have to replace these ramps prior to the overlay, because, to meet federal requirements. The little sticking issue is that it exceeded our engineer's estimate by about $100,000. So we were estimating about $250,000, and the actual cost was about $350,000. And the reason for that is that it's, concrete is in high demand right now, and everybody, all the cities out there are doing concrete work, and there's not enough concrete workers to go around. But good news is that the contractor who bid on it is one that we've worked with in the city before. They have been awarded our waterline replacement project this year, and they will be doing some concrete work in the city as part of that. So we're very comfortable with the contractor, it's just a bit of a bummer that they, it was a high bid. But the one good thing is that we were originally estimating about $350,000 for this project, including design funds, and we were able to do this in-house, so that saved some money on that, and we are within budget, so.
So you just said, and you're within budget?
Well, we are within the budget of, the overall budget of Complete Streets.
So the engineer's estimate was an estimate for the construction dollars. When we put together the Complete Streets budget last year for this year, we anticipated about $350,000 worth of construction costs. And at the time, it was associated with the extent of the pavement overlay program. That program has chosen different streets, so the amount of actual ADA work has actually reduced a little bit. So we were fortunate enough to still come in with approximately the same planned value for construction than what we had already planned for. So we're still within the realm of what our Complete Streets program had anticipated for the construction costs. So his comment about in-budget, we're within our planned concept of what we expected to spend for this element of the Complete Streets program in 2019, 18, excuse me, sorry.
So the overall whole project, you would not be requesting any more funds from the council?
For, okay, that gets a little more complicated. I'm glad you asked the question. There, there will be a reauthorization request coming in from the City Council, because we had some residual construction work from 2017 that rolled into 2018. And so what we've, we need to do is reauthorize some of 2017 for those construction activities for 2018, so that we're not sacrificing the 2018 work program. But, you know, had we not rolled that 17, you know, had they not delayed, we would've been just right. But yes, we're gonna have to ask for a reauthorization from last year for the construction contracts that rolled into 2018 from 17.
But I'm just clarifying here, but so, so there's no new dollars, it's, like you say, it's reauthorization of $17 in 18, which is not new dollars, and it's just crossing over year.
That is correct, no new dollars.
No, you're new dollars, okay.
Yep.
I thought we were asking for new dollars there, okay. Hopefully I helped clarify that. All right? You have more to go?
That's just about it, yeah.
Okay, sorry, other questions? I took over that one, I'm sorry.
Just so I understand the, the difference between the budgeted and the estimate, is, I see that for the entire Complete Streets program, there's a spending appropriation of $708,500. But is there, is there somewhere in this document the estimate for how much was, for the curb improvements originally? You said it's approximately what the contract was.
Not in this document. It was in our planning development for the budget numbers. There's a number of different items within the Complete Streets. One of the items was the ADA ramps for the PMP.
I'm gonna interject here a little bit, some history maybe for the two of you. So, and correct me, because we worked on this for a while. So we've had this thing called Complete Streets that's been confusing for a while, all right? And the decision made in 17 going into 18 was, well, what happened is, we'd have so much money for new pavement, and the requirement of the curbs to be brought up to standard when you're doing new pavement would eat into that new pavement amount, and so the amount of new pavement on streets went down because it paid for more curbing. So the decision was made to make that clear, that we would separate those two items, and we'd have, so all the money we wanted to go for new pavement, would always go for new pavement, and then we'd pay the, for the curbs and everything else we needed out of a different source. So it was clearly, this is curb money and this is pavement money. So that's kind of a separation we had recently, where it used to kind of get rolled in, and we didn't want to do that anymore, we want to keep that clear on where that money was going and why that was happening, because you can't do one without the other, by law.
That's correct.
Right? So I explained that well, so, so there's a little shift here.
Yep.
And the wording may get a little weird sometimes, as we change from, from how we show it on our budget. So this curb item is kind of a new thing.
Correct, it's, it's shifted the component of that one-line item. We're trying to work up a new title instead of Complete Streets to reflect more reality.
Like curbs.
Like curbs, ADA ramps, or whatever, yeah. We're trying to, we're trying to think of a reasonable project name.
And so what we're, what we're trying to get to is, after this year, because it was in some budget from before, Complete Streets will refer to a policy, not an action. So we'll have this policy on how we build streets, we build them completely, okay? With all the amenities, and then how we do, deal with, with additional work, whether we're repaving or adding new ADA curbs, or, and these are functions of the, of the street, that's not a Complete Street project. It's a program of function.
There's also an advantage of not having to manage an asphalt project with a concrete project. So there are some, also, hidden advantages that work on a staff level as well.
Thank you for that as well. Sorry, all that interjection, but go ahead, any more questions?
Because I'm gonna pick up kind of where you, where you were going. So I'm reading here in the financial information that there's $708,500 allocated to appropriation for four Complete Streets, which is really complete curbs, in my new way of thinking about it. In the 2018 curb enhancement project, your original estimate was $447.
Yes.
Of that, that's the new estimate of $447. Your original estimate was something less than that. I'm gonna guess around $345, because, let me, let me do that again, do the math for you.
Okay, thank you.
In, in the document here, in the agenda bill, your total project expenditure is $445.
That's correct.
And that reflects the higher costs from the bid of, of $357,900. So if I was to have gotten this estimate from you earlier, it would have been about $100,000 less, it would have been about $345?
That's correct.
So I'm not gonna do Tole Mart's kind of math here, but I'm gonna work in rough numbers. So if I had about $3,500, $100,000, and you had a budget of $700,000, I'm just gonna round, so there's another $350,000 worth of projects that you were anticipating to do with that budget?
That's correct. The portion of that will be for 2017 projects that Sheldon mentioned, to just complete those projects. And then there are a handful of other projects that we'll be doing this year in addition.
So are we gonna have any impact because of this additional cost on, on, on these other projects? Or do you think because we'll be able to do the design, design, and construction management in-house, which I think I heard you say? Can you tell me if that's not what you said?
Excuse me, Mr. Ray. May I respond?
Oh, please.
I want to clarify something here. The, you focused in on the $350,000 change as being what we had planned. We had planned that for approximately the construction. We had on top of that roughly about $100,000 in our planning numbers of that $700,000. We had planned another $100 for design and construction management. So when we look at this element of this line item in the budget, the $700,000, we were already planning to spend somewhere around $440, $450 associated with this element. Just bringing back the conversation a little bit to earlier, I mentioned that when we were planning this project originally, the locations of the pavement management overlay program would have created a lot more ADA ramps that we would have needed to have replaced, repaired, and things like that. But because the, the locations changed, the number of ramps actually reduced. And so we were able to stay within what our planned budget is, given the, even with the bidding environment that we had. And, I see a question.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how I can spend 50% more than I estimated on construction and, and not have that impact the budget. Now, I can, that's where I was, kind of where I was going. Hold on. And let me just ask the question. I will ask it, I promise. So design and construction management, we had originally intended to spend some money on that, are we still spending money on that?
Yes, a lot of that will be in-house.
So, so we don't have a direct outlay?
We, we track our staff hours and costs against the capital projects. And so that's why we still have showing in here in the table, the designing/construction having a dollar value, even though staff is the one performing that function instead of a consultant. And then there's the contingency that we have in there as well, that may or may not be utilized.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm, so help me with this. I'm trying to understand how, if we have a 50%, nearly a 50% increase in the cost of construction, other than we're going to be doing fewer cur, or fewer ramps, that we're not gonna feel this hit on the budget?
Okay, so let me try again.
Okay.
Okay, so, let's go back in time to 2017. Staff is working up the estimate for what it, what we're gonna be able to do for the $700,000 and change, okay? That is the budget line item. One component of it was the ADA ramps associated with the pavement management program. The construction estimate of the number of ramps we would've had to done at that point in time for the number of ramps, based on the location of the pavement management plan, we were estimating somewhere 25 to 30 ramps, I think it was. And we, we were thinking at that time that the cost to construct would be in the neighborhood of $350,000. The number of ramps has reduced because the locations have changed and the numbers have changed. While the engineer's estimate was an estimate of While the engineer's estimate was an estimate of construction, that wasn't what we had put in the number for this element of Complete Streets. What we put in for the number for construction was $350.
Oh, I get it.
So, if we, so let's say that the construction contract bid would have come in at $250, like the engineer's estimate, we'd be able to think of, what else can we do? Because we've got another $100,000.
And was that because of the reduced number of ramps that you?
It was because of the reduced number of ramps, yes.
Okay, I'm tracking.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So, we're all clear on how that all happened? And we're rolling some 17 money back into, because those projects aren't completed, so we're reusing.
But not with this intent.
Yeah, okay, right, but that's some unattached. So, within 2018, no additional funds are being requested. The overall project is within the 2018 accepted bid.
This one follow-up question. I'm not a big fan of when you do a competitive procurement to get one bid, because then it's hardly competitive procurement. Do we expect this to be an ongoing trend? I'm recognizing the real significant pressure on construction resources in this region right now, but I'm just curious what you're thinking there.
This is gonna be a challenge, as more public works projects are put out to bid. Recent conference I attended, there are billions of dollars' worth of construction projects going out to bid in the next three to five years in the Puget Sound region alone. And that does, those are only the big projects. That doesn't include the bread and butter stuff like this. And so, competition is gonna be very stiff, and, you know, contractors, it's gonna be a bidding market, you know, it's gonna be the contractor's market, not the owner's market. So, we can expect to see escalations in costs. There may be times when we only get one bid. Last year, we actually had an experience of no bids, and we had to go and poke the contractors to get some numbers out of them, and we were fortunate to be able to do that. But, no, it's gonna be an issue.
Thank you.
And especially with concrete work.
Yeah.
That's correct, especially with concrete work.
Other questions? So, this is an action item. It is suggested that we send this back to full council on May 21st. Are we okay with doing that? Are we clear on that? We're not asking, I originally thought we were asking for more money when I first started looking at this, but we're not. So, first of all, we just, are we good sending it back to council as is?
I am.
I get a head nod there, Chris? Okay. Then, are we okay with consent?
I'm okay with consent.
Yep.
I am too.
Consent to approve. Thank you.
All right, so that'll be going forward on May 21st, council consent calendar. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next item. Mr. York, you're up with AB 7538, updated water system plan that we're gonna be seeing you almost every month here till November, right?
I hope you don't get tired of me.
There you go.
Councilmember Ramos, can I move to reconsider here? And it's not that I want to change the outcome, but I just, are we authorizing the contract? Is that what we're, we just did? It wasn't clear to me what we were returning to council. Was it authorization of the contract with whoever this contractor is that we?
Westerland Construction.
Yeah, okay, okay. It just wasn't clear to me that that's what we were doing.
Sorry, I didn't make that clear. But yes, that is what we're authorizing them to award the contract.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure that was it. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you for clarifying the question. We need to always make sure that it was there. So, thank you. All right, AB 7538, Mr. York.
Okay, monthly update time. So, we're moving ahead with the water system plan. The accomplishments in the last few weeks, as you know, were a public hearing on water use efficiency goals. And although we didn't get any public comment, we have an email or two, of which the council members also got, that had some good input that is worth considering. So, we're moving ahead, and the next step, which is what we prepared tonight to talk about, is negotiating the policy considerations that go along with this particular water system plan. So, we spent some time strategizing what those are, and how we would build upon the considerations for you to, for the council to be able to understand and make judgments and decisions on each of these considerations. We identified three considerations that are mentioned in this two-page memorandum, which is attached to your agenda tonight. I'll just hit the highlights of those and see if you have questions regarding any details of those considerations. But the three considerations are degree of water conservation, or if you want to put it in economic terms, the demand side, how much water does the city need for its future, and what can we do to control how much water is being used? That's number one. So, that's the first building block that will be talked about. And by the way, the forum that we think is the most appropriate, or the administration thinks is most appropriate for discussing these things, is the council workshops, the monthly workshops. So, we've identified three workshops where we would, throughout the summer and early fall, to talk about these things in the full council setting. So, I'll go through those dates after I go through the policy considerations. Number one, supply, or demand side, namely conservation, because that's our main tool for controlling the amount of water we use. Number two is supply side. What options to obtain water do we have, and what is the appropriate mix of those options or option? We have, as you know, two primary sources, our groundwater supply and our regional supply. So, that would be the second policy consideration, once we discuss the demand side. And third, and these are all interlinked, so let's, we'll be revisiting certain things maybe as we build upon the decisions we make, is what water quality levels of service does the city want to establish for our water supply? And this goes into all sorts of topics, ranging from the PFOS problem that we've solved a couple of years ago on a temporary basis, to the fluoride issue, to some of our challenges with some groundwater supplies, like manganese, and some other considerations in our groundwater that require blending of our different groundwater supplies to meet our requirements. So, it's a level of service discussion on water quality, and perhaps where in the city do we worry about those things? So, right now, we have fluoride in some parts of the city and not in others, so. So, that's an overview. The three council workshops that we would be prepared to discuss these items on are June 25th, for the water conservation aspect, and the overview of the water system plan as a whole. Shortly after that, July 9th, on the water supply, and September 10th, for the big question of water quality levels of service, and synthesizing all these policy considerations into a comprehensive package that would represent what we, how we finalize our water system plan. So, that's mainly what I wanted to talk about tonight, unless you want more details on what's in this memorandum, or any other aspect of water system plan that you'd like to talk about.
Any questions?
Will there be a discussion somewhere in here about septic, houses that are on septic systems?
No, septic would be in the sewer comprehensive plan, not in the water, not in the potable waters.
It sounds to me like we're gonna be seeing a lot of you over the next several months as we work through this. So, from where I'm sitting, it's great to get an overview, but I think we have plenty of time to camera through all the details here.
Yes, as a reminder, this isn't set to come back to council till November. So, this is a, this is a big plan. It's important to our city. It's important, it's critical, our need of water. So, we'll be working on this as we plug through this.
And we have internal and external reviewers and stakeholders in this, ranging from the Department of Health, to the adjacent water utilities, to the King County reviews and looks at this thing, too. So, you'll be hearing from, input from what those, the feedback from those stakeholders is as we go along.
Okay, if we have nothing else, I'm sorry, I forgot the last item. Public comment, and I realized I didn't offer a public comment on the last item. So, let's do public comment on this one, and then if anybody has something on the last one, we'll revert back to that, if we need to.
Last summer, I felt like I was spending much of my time trying to defend the city about water conservation issues in the south Sammamish area. And I didn't think the city did a very good job of letting people know the situation about our rate structure. But our rate structure needs to have a strong component to discourage overuse and encourage conservation, because the bigger we use, the more expensive it is, the bigger the water tanks we have to build, the bigger water pipes we gotta build, everything starts going up, as we have to supply more water. And I think the council and the city needs to make sure they're getting that message out about conservation to people as what's predicted to be a hot, dry summer in the Pacific Northwest. So, it's all gonna come back to you, if you got a bunch of mad people about their water rates, so at least heads up to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on water system? Seeing none. Okay, this is an informational item only. Was there anyone that missed the last topic that wanted to say something? I just wanna make sure I didn't miss that. Okay. So, informational item, I think we are done with this for now. Thank you, Mr. York.
See you next time.
Yes, we will see you often. Okay, the next item is the one I think most folks are here for. MD, traffic calming in Old Town. Again, this is informational. We're gonna have a presentation, and this is on facts and data gathered, and it's just that at this point, so we'll let you start this show.
Hi, I'm John Mortensen, Senior Transportation Engineer here at the city, and here tonight to talk about what we found during the Old Town Traffic Calming Pilot Program. So, a little history to catch everyone up to speed. Last summer, we collected traffic data in Old Town, and then we met with the community and had a neighborhood meeting where we showed what we found for speeds, and had them mark on maps on what they would like to see, got a wide variety of ideas. And then, based on the feedback we got and the data we had, we designed the pilot program where we were going to try out different traffic calming devices in different locations and different spacing to see what worked, what didn't work, and what the users liked and disliked as part of the program. And then, after we had it designed, we marked the locations where we're going to install the devices, and did a neighborhood walkabout where we had over 50 people attend. And then, this winter, we got the devices installed, and I guess I'll back up. Before we had the devices installed, we collected more traffic data to give us a baseline, and then I had a contractor install the devices. They're temporary devices that can be removed afterwards. And we also used a website to collect data through a survey that helped us out a lot. So, as I mentioned, we collected data, and one of the most important things that I got out of it was what people preferred and did not prefer for devices. And so, all the comments were written, and so I subjectively just quickly went through and scored it, where if someone said, "I love speed humps," I gave it a four. If they said, "I hate chicanes," they're the worst things ever, I gave them a one, and kind of in-between. So, just to try and quantify the comments that we had. And speed humps were the most well-received of the traffic calming devices. Most people really liked them. Followed by the speed tables. Probably the only reason why the speed tables weren't as high as the speed humps is several people thought they didn't slow people down as much as the speed humps. Then, the third most well-received device were the speed cushions. And the comment, the concern that residents had was, they felt like they didn't slow down vehicles enough, because speed cushions are kind of like putting three pillows out in the road, where you have the openings for the emergency vehicles to go through, and so a motorcycle could quickly go through, or a car could have one wheel not have to go over a hump. And the traffic circles weren't quite as well-received. The people who drive around in Seattle, lots seemed to think they were all right, but there were concerns about turning, and thought maybe it wasn't a good fit for Old Town. And by far, the least popular of the devices were the chicanes. And we'll talk about those in a lot more detail a little bit later in the presentation. Also, as part of it, we reached out, oh, sorry.
Can I ask a question about the graph on the last slide?
Yes.
So, these numbers at the tops of the bars, those are the average of when somebody commented.
Correct, yeah. Yep, I took all, and like I said, I just want to put it out there, this is subjective, this is how I interpreted the comment. Someone else might interpret them differently, but I think it got pretty close to what people felt. And yes, it is an average.
And so, I just wondered, and I think you might have touched on this, but were there any where it was sort of polarized, like some people really liked, because with the average, it would come to kind of a middle ground, and so I wondered if that's what happens with traffic circles, if they sort of was a polarized group, where there's a lot of people that really loved it, so maybe fours, and a lot of people said they were really bad, and the one, you get a kind of a two in the middle.
It was close to that, but it was more of, and I'd have to go back and look through my notes, but off the top of my head, I believe it was, we liked them versus we don't like them. It wasn't so much as we love it or we hate it, but it was definitely, the circles were the most mixed of all of them.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we also reached out to other stakeholders, and talked to the public works operations, and they prefer the speed humps, and the reason for that is, they are the easiest for snow removal and for sweeping, that some of the other devices doing those two maintenance activities are more difficult. Also, reached out to Eastside Fire and Rescue. They actually participated in the walkabout, and they had a crew and a fire engine that stuck with us for most of the time until they got a call and had to go off. So, I was very happy with that. And they also helped us with the layout of the circles and the chicanes, and when the contractor was getting ready to lay them out, they, we'd arranged ahead of time, and they brought a fire engine out and made sure that they'd be able to drive through what we're going to install, and I wanted to publicly thank them for doing that. And they preferred the cushions, and what they said is, the cushions slowed them down very similarly to the speed humps, or speed tables, or any other device we installed, but they like, because, they slow them down because they have to line up the wheels to go through the opening, but they said that it's less wear and tear on their engines. So, as I mentioned, we collected traffic data, and the results showed that the speed and volumes did decrease. One of the important factors, especially in the volume, was the device spacing, that if we didn't space, if we had too much of a gap between the devices, they weren't as effective. I think Bush was our best results, and we had the most devices out there, and so the least amount of space between them. And then, we also looked at what happened after we, so one of the things we did is, there were signs up in Old Town that said restricted left turns off of Sunset, and also restricted turns off of Second at different times of the day, and we covered them up to see what would happen. And overall, based on the data, we didn't see a huge increase in cut-through traffic, but we did see a change in travel patterns, where it looked like less people were driving to Second, and then turning onto Bush or Andrews, and backtracking, and more people were turning onto Fourth and Sixth, and heading straight home. Another thing that we noticed when we compared the data from last summer with what we had last January is, the cut-through traffic did decrease after the traffic signal opened up at Second and Sunset. And that was more of the, I'd have to look at my notes. There's one direction where it had a bigger impact than the other, but the traffic signal there did have a pretty big impact on cut-through traffic. And so, this, just a graph, as I mentioned, so this is the average speed. And so this, just a graph, as I mentioned, so this is the average speed, or 85th percentile speed, and we show when we installed the different devices, and this is on Bush. And Bush is the most extreme case where we had the biggest drop. I believe there's two reasons. One, we had the most devices, and this is the closest location where our traffic counters were to the device, so that I do believe that it had a little bit of an impact on the data. And then this is the volume that we collected over time on Bush as well. And as I mentioned, the chicanes were not supported by the respondents. Some of the concerns that came with the chicanes are it created hardship for parking, and people had a fear of head-on collisions. And some people said that drivers were driving past through it and treating it as a slow him course. The data did show that the chicanes did reduce the speed by about three or four miles per hour, though. So because our goal is to try and reduce the speed on, in Old Town, and to reduce the cut-through traffic, we're recommending leaving them in place. There was a petition that one resident gathered, I believe, 21 signatures, asking for the chicanes to be removed immediately. And I do anticipate we'll receive public comment on the chicanes tonight. I look forward to hearing it, too. So the next steps for Old Town are, we're going to prepare a final report with recommendations for permanent traffic calming. And our recommendation as staff is to leave the devices in place until we can install permanent traffic calming. That way, we keep the speeds and cut-through volumes low until we can have a permanent solution. And we plan to return to this committee next month to review our recommendations. And are there any comments or questions?
Not so many members.
I have just a couple. So is that a speed table?
That one?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
It's just not one of your common apparatuses. So my question really goes to, we talked a lot about the, and I looked at the data, about the different, the impact on speed and primarily on speed. Did you see any significant differences between the calming apparatus, apparati, and the impact on Steve, or speed? That is, you know, we saw that speed humps were 10% better than speed tables or anything like that. Do you see any statistically or, you know, significant variances based on apparatus?
I'm not 100% sure, and the reason why is our counter next to Bush was right next to a, was pretty close to a speed table, and that had by far the most decrease. Looking at it, I would suspect the speed humps probably did have the biggest impact.
And then, this is my curiosity question I have to have. If you go back to your slide with the bright green and blue line chart?
Yeah, the one with the volume or the speed?
Both, either.
Okay, yeah.
I'm just kind of, I was actually looking at traffic volume, so that's the one I wanted. Other one? All right. Go back one.
Oh, so this is the volume?
No, I wanted speed.
Yes.
It's all about the speed. I was just curious why the westbound is notably less than the eastbound. Is there any explanation for that very consistent variance?
So, based on where this counter is, the westbound would have been taken, well, so this, my guess is, is you're heading, you head on Sixth, and then you turn the corner for Bush, and you probably just haven't had enough time to gain as much speed.
So it really was probably an artifact where, on that whole fetch of road where the counter was located?
Yes. That, I believe that's the difference between why they're separated. And in this particular case, they would have just gone over the speed table before they would have gotten there, whereas on the eastbound, they would have driven over and then continued slowing down for the table.
Yeah, so that's probably not significant. What we really do see is when you installed the table and the cushion, we saw a significant drop in speed.
Yes.
Great, thank you. I'm good.
So on these, the, can you remind me at what time the devices were installed, what day?
Yes. So in this particular case, I'm going to try and look on the graph, the table.
Oh, so it's where, it's where the?
Yes.
Speed table, okay.
So, late January, early February is when the devices were installed.
Okay. So to me, it looks like there's a very notable dip in the speeds for both eastbound and westbound after the devices are installed in that one. But then on the, on the volume data, am I correct that there's maybe less of a difference, less of a drop-off after the devices were installed? This one doesn't have it indicated where, when the devices were installed.
I'd say graphically, less of an impact, but, and this one gets a little trickier to look at because it also includes weekends, so as it goes down. So that first high area would be before we had the devices, where we were getting 315 cars a day. And then afterwards, we were getting, it looks like 215 cars, if I'm reading that right?
And then at the very end, it does seem like there's a consistent, maybe a week that's just low traffic, and is, does that continue? Or are you seeing that that's continuing, or is, was that just one low?
I believe that was spring break.
Spring break?
Yeah.
Okay, so it just pops back up after spring break?
Yes. And also in the memo that I put together that averaged the counts and the speeds, I actually excluded midwinter and spring breaks. That way, they wouldn't be skewing the data.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. And then I have a question about the Eastside Fire and Rescue's preference for speed cushions. So you explained why they prefer speed cushions. I'm trying to gauge if it was a very strong preference, or if it was, if they were also, they were, would also consider other options.
Kurt, because you're at the meeting with me, I, I'm trying to remember exactly what, if you could help refresh my memory from when we met with Chief Clark.
I'll jump in here. So Kurt Seaman, Transportation Manager. So there's a, there's several speed hump-type devices. There's, I don't know if you've got pictures of these, John, but we have the one with the space between the two, or tire paths. There's, so there's a speed table, which is just exactly what it is. It's a flat spot with two ramps. There's a speed hump, which is more of a ramp. And then there's a speed, can be either a table or a hump, I suppose, and it has actually wheel tracks spaced for large emergency-type fire vehicles. They're much wider than a normal vehicle. And so I think honestly that if it was entirely up to Eastside Fire and Rescue, they would probably prefer that one because it allows them to drive through, at least their big rigs, to drive through unimpeded for the most part. I think that their second preference would be either the tables or the humps. I don't think they much care. It slows them down a bit, and it certainly does, it certainly can affect response time, but they understand, I think they've, they've been really great partners here, and they understand there's a balance between quality of life and neighborhood and speeds and response time, and we're trying to find that sweet spot.
Thanks.
So following up that, I got another question. How did they feel on the circles? Because when you put the added curbs on those circles, those are pretty tight. They, they were okay with getting rigs around there. They just drove over.
Well, that's part of why they helped actually come out, and when we met with the contractor and them out in the field, we spray painted where it would be, and they drove through to make sure that they would be able to do that. And so whether they would drive over to them, or another option is they might be able to basically, if they're turning left, go the wrong way. But I don't know exactly how it worked for them, other than when I called up the chief, he still reiterated he prefers the cushions. And I didn't specifically get into the circles.
So they?
I think the cushions would be their number.
Yeah, I guess I didn't.
That is number one. What's, what's the number two? My question is, how do, you know, get away from number one. What's number two? Circles is down on their list or up on their list?
I don't know, but I'd be happy to follow up with them.
That'd be a question I'd like to know, because like I say, in, in these tight streets, there's, I mean, my car doesn't fit through there very easily, so I'm not sure how they're going, getting through there.
Right.
I know my neighbor with a big truck has difficulty, right?
Yes.
So I would, I would like to know where they sit with circles as well.
So as, as John mentioned, part of our, part of our plan is to present the information to you all tonight, hear from the community, and then next steps are to come back with a plan for, for a more permanent installation in Old Town. And I think that, what your comment was very helpful, that one of the next steps in that process before we come back with a final recommendations is to circle back with Eastside Fire and Rescue, make sure that what we're proposing fits with what their expectations are. That's, I think, all part of it. We want to hear from the residents, of course, as well, so.
Right. And also, you know, they, they have ways to come in and out. They have to, they don't have to drive all the way down Bush to get to Sixth and Bush, right?
Right.
Sunset and come in with a short, very short distance as well. So they have some ways around that they know of.
I mean, back to my point that I just made a minute ago, I think that they've been great to work with, and they've been very open and flexible in understanding of what we're trying to accomplish out there. So we hope to be equally good partners in the installation of these devices.
All right. As I, my question now, I was interested to see, you know, when, particularly when we changed the left turn signs, you know, and I, everybody knows, I live in the neighborhood, so I have my own anecdotal viewpoint of what's happening. But when you started looking at the data, I was surprised to see some places where counts actually went up when the devices went in, such as in the alley between Sunset and Alder. It got an increase in, in numbers of vehicles in the alley, okay? So, so that's where, okay, the device went in, now we have an alley that's getting, because whenever you move things around, they kind of tend to squish out somewhere else.
Well, and I'm glad, oh, sorry, I interrupted, I apologize.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I'm glad you brought up the alleys because that was something I had forgot to mention. So yeah, we got a little bit of an increase in the alleys, and what was even more alarming was there were some really fast vehicles. And the average that we put in the packet, I think, was 24, but that doesn't reflect that there were a few weeks where, there was one week in particular where the average in that alley was 30, or not average, the 85th percentile speed was 34 miles an hour in a narrow alley. In my opinion, that's pretty scary.
And so to follow that question, in that one table, we had the February, March when they first got installed, we don't, I don't see data for the, you know, after the left turn signs were taken down for the alley. Because I'm wondering if that went back down once, once that happened or not.
Yeah, and that's a good question. We, at a certain point, we stopped collecting because we needed to take our traffic counters somewhere else and.
Yeah, because I would, I would, just looking at it, it seemed like, okay, the devices first went up, people turned right and then headed, blasted down the alley to try to avoid some things. I'm wondering if that settled down and figured out when, when, you know, once, you know, alternate routes were kind of determined.
Yeah. What you noted is, you know, I guess what we would term an unintended consequence, and we're going to have to take that into consideration as we develop the, the plan for installation of permanent devices. We're going to have to consider all that data and look at the alleys as well, because what we don't want to have happen is an unintended consequence and something bad happened on the other side, right? Good point, good point.
Exactly. And, and I know that was a concern prior to this pilot as well, so I'm pretty, yeah, sensitive to that, so looking at that. Excellent. And there were a couple others of interest, because it looked like, like I say, I think that through traffic, I mean, it didn't go up, but when the left turn signs were taken down, residential traffic went up because of that. It looked like, you know, the numbers went up, the speed didn't go up, but some numbers went up, but it wasn't going all the way through. So it was more like folks, like my neighbors turning in, taking the shorter route because they're circling around. So that seemed explainable, more explainable. Okay.
On the community input, there are over 334 comments. Is that people, one person, one comment per person, or?
No. I don't know how many total people commented, but total, one person might have put 10 comments and commented on each device location, or one person might have commented one time. So I don't know how many total.
Okay. So, so in my mind now, just to clarify, this is data presentation, I hope everybody is seeing it. You're going to work with this base, but you've already got the 314 comments. We're going to get some additional comments here tonight, so now's a chance to, you know, reiterate again, if you've already gave the comment or your idea or whatever, make those comments now so they can be included during this next month, where they're going to sort through this data and come up with a more permanent recommendation, which we will review again. It won't be decided, you know, behind closed doors, it'll be up for review again as well. So at this point, I'm going to open it up. Oh, wait.
I was going to jump in, I didn't want to interrupt you.
Okay, go ahead.
Just jump in and just make a couple points, just to reiterate. I think we've had good success with the interim devices we've installed there, and so, and we know that we need to do some work and come back to you with a recommendation for permanent devices. And although there's some, you'll likely hear tonight some concern about maybe any of the individual devices, including the chicanes, we're reluctant to, to make any changes out there now and make changes that will have negative impacts, to Sheldon's point of unintended consequences. We do, we are committed to this neighborhood, and we are committed to a final traffic calming device installation plan out there. And our preference would be to leave what's out there now. It's not perfect, but it seems to be working pretty well, and then come back to you all with a plan for permanent devices. And there'll be an agenda bill, and there'll be a budget request associated with that as well. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. And again, that's, that's your thoughts now, but you're, we're going to take public comment?
Absolutely, yes.
And, and see what, what that all is. That's the initial thought. Because what would happen, I would add to that again, just for public comment, is that if you went out and changed something now, things would change out there. All of a sudden, if you, if you remove one device, all of a sudden, the traffic patterns would change, and we wouldn't know what's going on as we look for a permanent thing. So that's what we're trying not to do, is have things change that we don't understand, right? Is the reason for that comment, right? All right. So, but we are very interested in what you are seeing and feeling, because that's what really matters in the neighborhood, what it feels like to you. So, well, take your turn. Please go to the microphone and state your name, if you will, and, and tell us what your comment is on this topic.
So, my name is Susan Nicolay, and I live at 285 Southeast Andrews Street, so I am directly in front of the two chicanes. And so I have, I'm at ground zero, so to speak. I had spoken to John on April 23rd and discussed my concerns with him. And at that time, you had told me, John, that the responses to the chicanes were 100% negative. And I asked you when they were going to be removed, and you said probably sometime closer to the beginning of the school year, when something else could be put in their place, most likely a speed hump. And I expressed my concerns that they are dramatically impacting the neighborhood in a very negative way. And I, I said that from my perspective, I'd like them removed immediately or very soon, even if that meant that the replacement would not occur for a number of months. And after our discussion, you initially suggested maybe there'd be a survey that you'd send out. And I said, well, if I can gather petitions and basically get a unanimous vote that the people who are affected by these chicanes wanted these removed earlier than later, that, and you, you agreed. And you said it would have to be 100%, which I have achieved, with the exception of the Compassion House. You said it would have to be the 200 block, the people directly affected by the chicanes. So I did send you a copy of the petition two weeks ago, which had everybody in the 200 block, with the exception of two houses, which are the Compassion House, Transitional Housing, that is owned by a conglomerate of churches. I was not able to get those because I haven't, I don't really know who the content is. I haven't, I don't really know who to contact. I would like to have the chicanes moved now. I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to pass around a picture that I took before I came over. And this is directly in front of my home. And this is directly in front of my home, too, on a negative basis, because the chicanes are quite long.
If you could get back to the microphone so it gets recorded, please. Thank you.
The chicanes are about one and a half car lengths long. If you park at either end of them, and somebody parks behind you, you are trapped. So essentially, they're taking up two to three parking spaces. And this is on a street where very few people have driveways. Most of us rely on parking on the street, and it's a congested area. When you get to this time of night, the street is pretty packed. So now, essentially, we've taken up at least four of those parking spaces, and it's having a negative impact. My neighbor across the street has been locked in to where she could not get out on a couple of different occasions. You can see from the picture, the car that parked behind the chicane is stuck. And in fact, the other car is too, because I pulled up. So this is not workable. And I understand that you want to wait to make decisions, but this is affecting people right now in a negative manner. And I'm asking that it be considered that we go ahead and take them out. People do not want them there. And we have to keep living in those neighborhoods. I was all for the speed reduction program. I'm absolutely against these. And I'm hoping that the council and everybody involved will take that into consideration.
Thank you very much.
My name is David Wood, and I am the owner of the duplex adjacent to Susan's. And it's a picture of my tenant's vehicle that happens to be stuck in the middle there, as you see that going around. The issue, as I totally concur with her, is, well, there's several things. Let me just go through. When you, people came up and did the great presentation and showed it went humps, tables, cushions, and last, the chicanes, okay? The numbers are there, the data is there, the statistics are there. What did people tell you? What did they like? What did they not like? The chicanes were approximately 50% less than the next lowest choice available. That should be a clue that it was not a popular decision to have the chicanes compared to all the other ones that they had. The chicane issues were brought up, regulating to the parking, which is so well described, the head-on possibility of issues, the slalom course, all of these things which could be a danger to those people. When my tenants are parking there and somebody's coming through, if you notice the way it is set up, if they come through at any sort of speed, a little excess, they will have to swing out, which means they have to swing in, which could cause a potential side-swiping of the vehicles that are parked, you know, in front of it on either side going that direction, just from the control bases. The speed humps were the biggest impact. That was stated here. They had the biggest impact on things. Why not go with speed humps? If it is the greatest impact, and if that's what we're trying to do, why not go with what you people have seen with the data that has the best impact? A petition to remove, which was brought up again by the community. People are saying here, well, let's hear from the community. Let's do what they want to do. And what's also was stated, and I forgot your main names or, okay, with Kurt, that he was trying to find, when he's talking about the police and then the fire and so forth and so on, a quality of life in the neighborhood and the need to have balance. Well, this is the neighborhood. Those are the people that are signing that. Those are the people that are impacted directly. Do they want this? No. So for the sake of what? I don't understand. I would again agree that it needs to be removed. You could put a hump there now, or a bump, or whatever you want, you know, in that spot, which would still allow the parking, but it doesn't take up the same space. As soon as possible would be best. I mean, if it costs you too much money to do so, I will go there tomorrow with my sledgehammer. I will take it out. It may take me a while, I'm an old man, but by God, I'll have my heart going into that thing every time I hit it, to get rid of that. So, I just look at the data, I look at the rationalization, I look at the community for what they want. And to me, it seems like it's an issue that should be handled now, rather than postponing it. And then I almost thought that I heard saying, and I may have misinterpreted, that you want to wait till the end and you recommend keeping them where they are. Now, I don't know if that meant keeping them where they are permanently on everything, or until that final decision is made. But anyhow, the chicane thing, it, I really feel for the sake of all those instances, it needs to be gone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on, more neighbors, come on.
Jenny Bingham, 375 Southeast Andrews Street. And I'm going to be a little bit all over the place since, first, I want to say that many of us worked with the city approximately 2007 on traffic calming. It didn't have the people like John and Kurt with all the surveys and stuff like that. It was kind of haphazard, put it that way. And we couldn't come up with anything in the way of humps, chicanes, or anything. But we did work hard to get the no left-hand turn lanes. We worked hard on that, and we wanted it. 10 years later, we wonder why we've got 200, 300 cars, high rates of speed? Well, it's not going to get better, because this city keeps growing. Leave the left-hand turn lanes up, please. I've tried to get a date from not only the city, but they passed it on to the police department of exactly when those were placed. But in hearing from John, or maybe it was Kurt, that Google map showed that it was probably 2008 they were placed, and that sounds right. Okay. So, going forward, 10 years from then, growth. Now another study, and we have temporary traffic calming measures with permanent possibility of, of permanent, yeah, in August. Many of us feeling, are feeling that the city wants to remove, or actually remove the no left-hand turn lines, signs, not just cover them, remove them, for aesthetic reasons. And not only aesthetic reasons, they also need our community to get all this traffic off of Sunset and Second. So why not just allow them to go through our community with bumps, with everything? Left-hand turn lanes, we tried hard for. We had police enforcement for about four or five months, and when we would call, somebody would come down, watch for a while, give a few tickets, and take off. We quit calling because 10 years later, we're told, there's only one traffic policeman. Yet our taxes keep going higher and higher to pay for policemen for safety. The extra 200-plus cars going either east or west is, you know, a crucial safety issue to children, bicyclists, walkers, joggers, and those in wheelchairs, since we do not have complete sidewalks or crosswalks. We, many of us, would rather be inconvenienced to go down to Second and turn on Andrews or Bush and not take our left-hand turn, if you'd leave them up and try to get some enforcement, rather than having 200, 300 cars a day. It's only going to get worse. You might see 200 now. It's going to be 300. There's three schools where parents are taking their kids to school and picking them up. It's a bypass for out-of-town people. Growth shows, this will not get better. Now, a new Dollar Tree is going to open up. We don't have many places downtown, Old Town, to shop. You look on Next Door, so many people, and especially people in the Highlands are very excited about the Dollar Tree opening. What do you think that's going to do? Where are they going to go? You take the left-hand turn lane, signs out, they're going to use Andrews, probably Andrews, because then that's a straight shot down to the Dollar Tree. Please think about our safety and our quality of life in our small town. We still like to see children playing. Now we've got the alleys, which you did talk about. The alley between Bush and Andrews did not have a counter or speed or anything. And I have written, John, about the speeds, and it is just, it isn't, I don't know why only the north sou, north side got a study on their alley, when most of the traffic is Bush and Andrews, and now the alley. So we've got basically three streets. There's no speed limit on our alleys. It's very dangerous. Children play. There are many children between Bush and Andrews, who their backyard is the alley. So, Fourth and Fifth, just like Sixth, and I've, I've told John to this, and I think Kurt has gotten the information too, I really believe they need speed humps in that short distance, just like Sixth, and I know there's a daycare there. But they come around, and then they come up to the street, and they, they don't stop. They just, so they've got a clear shot from Sunset and come around. They don't stop at the stop signs on Fourth. They don't. There's no bump there, there's... So I know many of the people have talked about that. The people that have talked about it to me aren't here, unfortunately. And there was no apparatus for calming put between Fifth, where the circle is, down to 285, where the chicane is. So, not only do we get the Fourth Avenue, Fourth, people coming off of Fourth. If they come off of Fifth, do the traffic circle, and then, I mean, it's a high rate of speed past my house, down to the chicane. So, please, please, think about the safety of the children and the disabled, and just the quality of life for all of us on these Old Town streets. Thank you very much, both John and Kurt especially.
Thank you. Jenny?
I'll comment on the previous agenda bill that the public comment wasn't allowed to.
It's not allowed to, it was...
If I had raised my hand, I know you would have called me. I'm just giving you... But I've been at Richards Road quite a few times, just immediately north of I-90, and they've been working for weeks and weeks on getting their crosswalks and their, their curbing and all of that for ADA in there. And it's, it's amazing how long it's taken them to do that. And I'm sure it's tied into the same thing that was talked about, is the lack of contractors and all. But I was just through there today, and the police were there, and all the crews, and it just snails pace how that's happening. So I feel your pain. And I have another project at another place I'd like to do, I'd get a concrete project myself, and it's, they don't like to call back. Anyway, Sunset, there's been a lot of work on Sunset, on the shoulders and all, and I guess you're getting ready to do an overlay, that maybe is driving some people over onto the Alder and Andrews Street too. But I know you're doing an overlay there. Are you going to end up connecting those 100-year-old pieces of concrete under there that keep shifting and causing that road to be one bump after another? Question, not for an answer now, maybe. Overall, this, this whole thing you've done has been really positive, with one exception, which I'll get to, on, on how the, the work with the community, the different, different kinds of things that were tried out. And it's, in a lot of ways, very successful. The chicanes aren't in front of my house, but I'm very close to them, and at least to one of them. And they are a constant problem. You gotta remember that we have duplex zoning there. Most of the houses have 50-foot lots, so you don't have much parking in front, and it gets messy, and it's just caused, it just given a lot of people a bad attitude towards this whole thing, especially after they've signed petitions and they don't feel there's going to be action. I don't see any reason why I should be out there helping my neighbor, or my neighbor landlord, or, anyway. He's, he's there a lot, despite being, living up on the squat, to get rid of the chicanes. I think, I think that would be a good thing for you to do. The traffic circles, I'm used to, when I'm, say, westbound on Andrews, I've used to, there was, used to be a stop sign on the cross streets there, and you just kind of go through, you figure you have the right of way. You gotta, it takes a mindset, when you come, that you need to be yielding to the side-street person if they're on the right. And you're not, I'm not used to that. And I gotta think about that every time I go down there. And part of that is the stop, signs are bagged, but the white lines are still there for, for the cross streets. So, it, it just, it's a, it's a mindset that I need to, to change. I personally have not noticed an increase in traffic once you, when you bag the signs. But I'm closer to Second, so they slow down by the time, they, they've just gone through the chicane, if they're, if they're westbound, and then there's my house, and then, you know, very close to Second. So, I, I've not, I was surprised how little change I saw on that PMP traffic with the, with the signs being bagged. It didn't seem to, I didn't, I personally did not notice it. Response time for Station 71, right here, I think the safety by the slower speeds that we get from the speed humps and some of the other things, it's, the increase in safety overpowers the few seconds of response time. Loss. Alleys, can we restrict alleys or get some signs about 15 mile an hour speed limit on alleys or something? People have six-foot fences and often a very narrow part from their, coming out of their garage, so they're already significantly out in the alley before they can see oncoming traffic. And I think the alley speed is something we should deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Yes?
Hi, mine is Richard Earl. I live at 450 Southeast Andrews Street. I've got a Andrews Street contention here, but I'm commenting more because I live 100 feet from the circle at Fifth and Andrews. And the comment has been, it's kind of hard to drive around, and it's not, if you really look at it, garbage trucks get around them very easily. There's a semi truck that was, must have been a delivery, came through and made it around that. It was, was not a full-size semi, it's one of a double, without the second trailer, came through just fine. I also noticed that with that, you eliminate the T-bone effect of somebody who would run the stop sign on Fifth and having somebody coming down Andrews at a high rate of speed, you know, that's a, it eliminates that option, or possibility. And I've noticed too, that it does slow people down, because I live right where people start to slow down. And, you know, it's an easy way to slow things down, and I think it can be addressed more aesthetically with a planter in the inside. And obviously, the fire department has already figured out that they can get around that just fine. But I think they work really well in Kirkland and in Seattle, I haven't driven through that. And I'm very much in favor of that staying there, as opposed to having a hump. But it is true that we do, once you leave the circle and going westbound, that is too long a stretch. And it'd be nice to have some sort of hump or something right after Third or Fourth, so that when people don't stop at the stop sign, which they don't, that the, the hump will slow them down, you know? So it's, that's that. But, and chicanes down at the end, yes, that they're easy just to go around at full speed, so they really don't do much good. And I can understand their frustration with their parking situation. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's everybody, unless you want to.
You want me to speak?
Only if you want to. No need, only if you want to.
This has taught me something extremely important, that I should pay more attention to what's going on, because I'm sure people came to my house about all of this, and... to what's going on because I'm sure people came to my house about all of this and I didn't pay enough attention because I should have been on the walkabout because I would have, it is, I sound terrible when I say this, but it's common sense, it's not going to work where they put it. Because when you know Andrews and how the people park on Andrews, there's utility poles, they have signs there, you can't pull in and out. It's an accident waiting to happen. One day someone is going to come a little too fast, they're going to hit that chicane, they're going to bounce into my car. The lady, neighbor, she got penned in for two days. It's just not common sense. And hopefully it's removed before there is an accident. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, oh, could you state your name for the record? I didn't hear your name up there, please.
Roxanne Caruso, and I live on Andrews.
Thank you. So we heard very clearly that chicanes are a failure in the neighborhood's mind. I'd like to say though, that, to remind her that this was a pilot project, so we tried all these things and we found out that that was not a desirable effect. So I'm hoping that you will take these comments with you as you sit down this next month and decide what needs to be done and how we're going to do it and when we're going to do that.
Yes, I agree with everything you just said. And I, just to add on to that, I just make a few observations or comments. So we know that Old Town's been dealing with traffic and speeds and volumes for years and much to everyone's dismay. And as has been mentioned to me many times, we've, we haven't done as much as perhaps we should have. So along comes this pilot program. We've never done this before. It's not perfect, but I think we've, I think we can all agree, we've seen significant reductions in speeds and volumes, and we've learned a lot along the way. You all have been great partners. You've, starting with the walkabout and all your input, it's, that's part of the pilot program. And our, your responsibility is to comment and provide us input, and our responsibility is to, is to use that input and make good decisions going forward. So as John mentioned, where our plan is to come back here in a month to CIC with final recommendations. We certainly heard angst and concerns with the chicane and the alley speeds, so those are two things we'll be focusing on and be better able to comment on next month, as well as bringing you a permanent proposal for permanent devices, as well as a, along with that will be an agenda bill for funding for that. So more to come. I think we heard you clearly, and so our plan is to be back next month.
Okay. Any other comments from us? Then, yeah, we're just going to do that and thank you all for sharing that. I, I think overall, we have one area of concern, overall, the rest of the neighborhood. And as I said, we've had some good effects, I think, in overall things. And so keep the big picture in mind and not the part of it that failed. I'd like to. So this is not a distraction. I'm hoping that we'll do something very soon. Thank you. So we're gonna, we're gonna take that information and we will get back to you as quickly as we can with that, if that works. That's the plan. We gotta sit down and do all this and come up with something. That action item can't be answered right here. We don't have the authority to do that right here, right now. We don't. So we just have to take that, put it all together and write a proposal that the whole council has to agree on.
When is the next meeting?
The next month, one, the third, third Wednesday of the month, or Thursday, excuse me, third Thursday of the month. I don't know the date off the top of my head. It'll be action item for this committee on what to do. They'll come with, the staff will come with a recommendation to us next month. And we'll see. That's what I can tell you right now.
And we can give more feedback on project.
Yes, you can always input. Yes, yes, you. You will be able to see the recommendation and make your comments again. So I'm.
The reality is, the reality is, it can be taken out next week. The people who are affected by it have already stated that they're okay waiting.
So, so we're going to put this to staff and you're going to talk to your folks, to the mayor and to the city administrator, and you'll be having conversations, starting immediately, and they will get back to us. I can't guarantee you when at this point in time, but it will be soon. So we're not going to get into a discussion on actions here. It's not appropriate for that point. Okay? Thank you very much for your input. If you have more, I don't know if the, is that site still open? It's not for comments any longer? Or is it?
I'm not sure if it is.
Okay, all right. You can always, you can always write any of us, council members, anytime you like, or to the mayor also anytime you like. Call us or email us, please.
Is the mayor usually here?
No, not at these meetings. All right. Thank you very much. We will then be moving on to our next item, which is more traffic coming, but in Esquah Highlands. So another neighborhood that is interested in the same thing. So, so yes, traffic coming with Highlands. You have, John, you're still up. That one.
All right. I'm John Mortensen with the City of Esquah Public Works Engineering and here to get, tonight to give you guys an update on what the work we've been doing up in the Esquah Highlands. And so a little bit of a history, we held a couple of public meetings, one last summer and another one in January, where we got a lot of feedback from the community on different traffic issues that they were having and concerns. And so out of these meetings, there was an awareness campaign that we partnered with the folks up in the Highland to educate about driving safely. And we also identified the concerns that were told to us, and we made a list of what all those were, and evaluated them and came up with a document that we called the Next Steps, where we responded to each of those and came up with a plan. We also launched a webpage and a survey for the Highlands and began implementing our steps, our next steps. And in the process, we also took some of our traffic counters that we had and remeasured up on 24th and 25th in the Highlands to see if the speeds had changed based on the education campaign. And yesterday, we had a really successful public meeting. So out of the Next Steps, one of the biggest concerns wasn't necessarily the traffic calming that we have in Old Town. It was a lot of concern about pedestrian crossings, especially along Park Drive, and both at the school and at the fire station were frequently mentioned. And so out of it, we decided to do a pedestrian flag program where the city partnered with IHCA, the Highlands Fiber Network Regency Center, and the Highlands Council to purchase and install pedestrian flags. So we've got those up right now at a number of busy crossings. Another concern that came out of those meetings was drivers turning the wrong way on one-way streets. So we put additional wrong way, do not enter signs. And the streets manager, Bennett Ashbaugh, had a really good idea to try using two-way reflectors where if you're going the correct way, you see a white reflector down as a pavement marker. And if you're going the wrong way, you've got a red reflector facing you. And so we recently got those installed. And another really big concern up there was no turn on red. And this was in two particular situations. So at 10th and High, which is where the Ram is at, and at Highlands and Discovery, site distance is obstructed, and so there are existing signs that say no right turn on red. Unfortunately, a number of vehicles are turning right on red. And so we installed additional signs. We also installed a stop here on red because some of the people were proceeding to the crosswalk and they weren't actually activating the signal. And so we did those. And then right here, we've got a, the intersection of Federal and Park, there's a pedestrian traffic signal where the only time it is red is when a pedestrian is crossing, that there's no vehicle or conflicts on this one. And so it was brought up at the, our community meeting in January and evaluated by staff. And we decided that because this is a pedestrian signal, we did not, let me back up. So originally, at this intersection, the sign said, right on red arrow after stop. And because we wanted to protect the pedestrians in the crosswalk, we changed it so no right on red. That way, a driver wouldn't make a quick stop and then start going and not see a pedestrian. Illegal parking in front of fire hydrants is a really bad problem in the commercial part of the Highlands and especially in front of the Starbucks and the Jimmy Johns. And so this is a picture of a car parked in front of the fire hydrant at the Starbucks. And so we've purchased and we're about ready to install some educational, no parking signs, a little bit different than your traditional no parking sign, and help educate people that you're not supposed to park within 15 feet of a fire hydrant. You're not supposed to park in front of a fire hydrant. Because most times when I'd go up there, I wouldn't see the blatant violation like this. I would see someone who's parked three feet from the fire hydrant, which still gets in the way of the fire department. And as you're heading up Park Drive, getting near the fire station, there's a merge where we go from two lanes to one, and the merge would happen right before the crosswalk. And so drivers were heading up the hill and they're more focused on merging and not looking at the crosswalk. So we redid that, where we moved the merge further back, moved the warning signs to give people more warning. And I think of all the things that we've done, this might be the one that, I think most of the things we have done have been well received, but this might be the most well received, that people really appreciate the revised merge. And as a result of merging traffic earlier, we ended up being able to add a lot of parking stalls that weren't there before. And so the next steps, as we move forward in the Highlands, so I guess I'll back up to last night. So we had another public meeting and the feedback we received is really positive and people were happy that we had been doing something. And I feel like what we've done is a success. We haven't completed everything on our next steps, so we're going to work on speeding. We did find on most of the locations, the speed has gone down by a few miles per hour based on the education campaign, but we'd still like to get them slower, especially, there was one spot on northbound 25th where cars are actually driving faster than they were. But otherwise, we've reduced the speed. And so we're going to purchase and install some portable radar speed signs. And that way, we can move them around the city, but we're going to start with the Highlands, especially on 24th and 25th. And there's a few areas where the parking is really close to the crosswalk and that's obstructed, so we're going to install a few no parking stalls to try and enhance pedestrian visibility. And we're going to look at different alternatives on what to do at the parking lot that's in that picture that's on College Drive, just behind the school, that both the residents and the police department have a lot of concern about this parking lot because parents are using the on-street parking here as a school drop-off and pickup. We also have a crosswalk really close by, and so there's just a lot of congestion and want to try and improve the situation. And we're also going to keep working with the neighborhood and addressing their concerns as they come up. And does anyone have any questions or comments?
Councilmember Ray.
I just have a couple of fun things for you to consider. I'm really intrigued with the no parking within 15 feet of the fire hydrant signs. I think that's super. It's not just a Highlands issue, it's a Essequa issue. Have you considered painting the curbs 15 feet on either side of a fire hydrant and possibly even striping the pavement 15 feet on either side of the fire hydrant to make it like really apparent where I should not be parking?
We have had conversations, and I'm going to turn this over to Sheldon. Or Kurt.
So, short answer is yes, of course, we've looked at that. And it's a, it's a great idea. It's another way to delineate the areas where you shouldn't park. And back to this idea of balance, where our, our Public Works Operations folks are pretty stretched fairly thin on just maintaining our existing infrastructure. And curb striping is something that we have a lot of curbs striped out in various locations throughout the city. It's, it's not our first choice of delineating no parking areas because it's another maintenance issue. So, so again, the short answer is yes, that would, that would be another, or perhaps an additional way to mark those areas out. And, and we're trying to balance adding more work to their work plan with looking at least initially other ways to discourage parking. So we're not, it's not ruled out, but it's not.
You're going to consider some lower-cost alternatives first?
Yes. And the signage is, signage is, has an initial cost, but it doesn't have nearly the maintenance cost that continue to keep your curbs striped does.
And then I was just intrigued that in the Highlands, or in Old Town, we spent a lot of time, and the whole study was around using physical devices for traffic calming. And really, in the Highlands, we didn't do any of that at all. We used completely different techniques. And then just, I'm just going to finish with a comment. So it was really fun. One of the first things I did after joining the council was to do the Old Town Walkabout. And I thought that was, this was an excellent experience and was a super way to engage the public. And I think we really won over a lot of people in the course of that walkabout. I watched people change from being so skeptical about you, John, and that you were clearly a nefarious evil person, to thinking that maybe, maybe, just maybe, he was really trying to do something good for us. And I also participated in the, in the January Highlands public meeting about traffic calming. And I'm really excited that they're, they're feeling better because they were a little cranky in January. So congratulations to all of you.
I, I also just wanted to echo Councilmember Ray's comment about the curb striping because I think that is how people usually know if they're going to park somewhere or not. They look if the curb is marked. So I think, I think that's the most straightforward way to address that. And I'm glad you're considering it, even though it's more maintenance. And then I had a question about the survey. So the other, the other survey for the Old Town, there were comments, but there weren't a indication of how many people were commenting. And I wondered on this survey if it's the same sort of format because, and my reason for the question is because I would like to know how many people were actually getting comments from on the online system.
I can pull it up on the Highlands a little bit more easily because it was more of what did we miss question rather than multiple questions. And in Old Town, we had multiple surveys because we had one survey up and going. People found it difficult. People found it difficult to use, so we saved the data, closed the survey, and opened a new one. But I could look up the number of people who responded for you.
Okay, yeah, just when, when that data is available, and for, for online surveys in general, I think it's, for me, it's helpful to know how many people took the survey. And I know with online, you also, you don't know if somebody took the survey a couple of times, and there's, I think, not much you can do about that. But at least if we know how many, how many people, in theory, went into the system and took the survey, I think that would be helpful and gives a sense of how many people we're reaching, so. Thanks.
I just wanted to add to that, another difference between Old Town and Highlands is Highlands has some fairly robust, organized community organizations up there, which we've been working with through this process. We've been meeting with them monthly. It's a really good way to share information between the city and the Highlands, the Highlands organizations and the Highlands community. And so, and our intent is, as John talked about, next steps, is to continue that, that relationship with, with the Highlands. We feel it's a, it's a really great way for them to see what we're doing, and that's to hear what their needs are. So plan to continue that with them up there.
I like to throw out the fact that I'm just very proud of what the city and the staff are doing in this area. We have two pilot projects on traffic calming in areas that this has been a concern for a long time, and citizens haven't felt like they've been getting a response from the city. I think we have now, and the fact that this room wasn't overflowing with people seems to tell me that also, that many things are working. They are improving, and people are happy enough, they don't have to come and tell us how it's not working. So that's a good thing. So I'd like to take that, pass that credit on to all you and the effort that you've done with that, and looking at those things because they're working. We have some questions, we're gonna keep improving. The fact is, if you have a pilot and you don't have some things that don't work, then it wasn't a very good pilot, in my mind, because you weren't trying something you didn't know, right? And I give you credit for trying something that you don't know if it's gonna work, and then you have some failures on the way, and then you move on with, with better solutions. So I expect that. So that's okay. And take that with that grain of salt, that it's okay to have failures, particularly when you're doing a pilot. So there lies for me. So I appreciate that, but I also want to look at the, those public comments, because they are serious, right? So with that, we have time for public comment.
The Highlands project started after the Old Town project. The Highlands project has no one here, has completed things, things are done, and they're happy. How many months before we get the Old Town one? It's another month before we're gonna talk about it again. And then is it gonna be an agenda bill? We gotta wait till the council gets the agenda bill? There's no reason why, at least with the chicanes, you can't make a decision and get it taken care of. It's just ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right, there's information topics, so that takes care of that. Our last main item is AB 7599, the 2019-2024 six-year transportation improvement plan. Mr. Kurt.
I'm gonna need a minute to get the, to bring this up, yeah. Okay, ready whenever you are here. Are we good, good to go? Okay, so I'm happy to come here and talk to you about the, our six-year transportation improvement plan, which runs from 2019 to 2024. It's a fairly large document you have in your packet, and there's a lot of information there. I'm not gonna go through the entire thing with you, but there's some, some elements of that I wanna highlight, and, and focus on a few projects, especially the projects in the first six years of the plan. What is, what is it? It's a, it's a require, it's a requirement, it's a state requirement. It's, it is a plan for all of our projects. If you look at, I don't know if you have this sheet in front of you, I'll bring it up. It's probably easier if you have the sheet, but it's also in your packet. We have the, the six-year projects prioritized and laid out through the next six years, our best guess at how they would unfold and when they, when we would need the funding. Beyond those six years, we have the list of all the other projects in our plan, but we don't have as much detail on when we would do them and, and exactly how they'd be funding. So it's not a, it's not, the overall list is not prioritized, but I would say that there's certainly some priority to the projects that you'll see in the first six years, and that, those are the ones I'm gonna focus on tonight. It's a, why we do it is it's a state requirement, but more importantly, it helps us plan our, our projects, plans, plans for the expenses of them. It also is very important for funding eligibility, so there's a lot of grants that are available to us. One of the requirements of the grant is you have to, typically you have to be showing your, those projects in your six-year plan. So it's also, it's an important way of the regional and state agencies like WashDOT and PSRC to look overall at what all the cities have planned for their capital projects. So the process is, this came to you, has come to you already to council, it's been set, a public hearing's been set on June 4th, which is where you will, will take testimony from the public on any public comments. The purpose of this briefing tonight is just to give you, give you a little more detail about what this is all about and answer any questions you have. So it's a planning document, I think some things will come in here if I've done this right. So it's, it relies on our land use, it relies on our mobility, non-motorized and motorized. It looks at regional components and accommodates those as well. Going the wrong way here, sorry about that. And as I mentioned, it's an important document that's useful to our neighbors, both our local neighbors like Semamish and surrounding communities, but also, King County uses this, Sound Transit, PSRC, WashDOT, and so forth. So here's, here it is. It has a lot of detail here. I think there's something like 16 or 18 projects above this double line, and that's what's in our six-year plan. And then beyond that, other projects that, I think there's about another, I think it's a total of nearly 50 projects. But what I wanna focus with you tonight is on, is going through briefly what these above-the-line projects are, what's in our six-year plan. So, and there's, this is the second page of that document. So you can see there's a lot of plant, a lot of projects out there, some pretty big dollars. If you look at those bottom lines there, we've got, you know, over, over $500 million and nearly $700 million worth of projects. So here's a, here's a, I don't expect you to see all this, but here's, here's what our six-year projects, here's where they are. And you can, this is meant to just give you a sort of visual idea that they're, they're projects large and small, they're projects distributed throughout the community, and these are the projects that I'm gonna speak with you briefly tonight, so we don't have to worry about each one of these and trying to read what's on there. And then here's, if you look at our overall project list, if we were to construct all the projects on this list, here's where they would be. So again, what's in our six-year TIP, and then what's in the overall plan. You have, you should have all of, in the package that went to the agenda bill, I'm not sure if these maps are in it, but you have, you have them in your materials tonight. Oh, you don't have the presentation? Okay, so we'll certainly, so I apologize about that. Well, certainly, we certainly can make these available to you.
Thank you.
Not a problem at all. Because they, I think they are useful. So I think we can, I think what you're, I wanna hear you asking is, for both, both this and this map would be useful.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so here, so we're gonna go down the list here in no particular order, other than these are the projects that we're, that we're focused on over the next six years. So this is, I'm just gonna talk briefly about these at sort of the concept level. The idea here is a crossing of I-90, and it would be in the vicinity of 11th and 12th and cross generally over to the area of the 62nd project, which is coming in from this area. And it would provide an important north-south connection between Central Issaquah-Gilman area and, and the Costco side of town. And there's not, as you, as we all know, there's not a lot of north-south connections. We have, we have 900 crossing, we have this potential crossing, we have Front Street, we have 4th once that reopens, but not a lot of, and not a lot of ways to get across the freeway. And the freeway does truly divide up Issaquah and turn us into sort of a north and south side of town, so we feel an additional crossing would have real value. We don't know the nature of this crossing, this is, the project here is just to get started on conceptual design. We do know that the sooner we can start thinking about this, the more helpful that will be as we talk about Gilman, as we talk about development on the north side of town, as we talk about Sound Transit coming to Issaquah. It's a ways out, but it's not too soon to start thinking about a potential additional crossing and how that may fit with whatever Sound Transit has planned as they come into Issaquah. The other kind of cool part of this is we are doing an IJR, Interchange Justification Report, at Front Street and I-90, and part of that work is to look at options of what might happen at Front and I-90. But sort of more, more important to us, or more interesting to us, is that that study also is going to look at what, what improvements could be made downstream and upstream from that Front Street-I-90. So that would include looking at an additional crossing here. So haven't started the work yet, it's pretty, it's pretty early in the discussion, but it's a, it's a, it's an important component to our plan and kind of an exciting one. So flipping around here, this is over by the other city hall, this is in the vicinity of Holiday Inn, here's, here's where I work, here's the other city hall, and here's the state park. And so originally, this, this, this is a difficult piece of roadway, there really needs to be two dual left-turn lanes, westbound left-turn lanes, and then a right-turn lane getting you off of 900. So that was how the project was conceived originally, and our plan originally was to follow up on the 62nd Costco project with design and construction of this piece to make that, that whole area work better functionally, circulation-wise. What's changed a bit on this one is we now know that the state park is looking at some options for their entrance, and we know that as they're looking at that, that is likely have impacts to this whole area here. We don't really know what those are because we don't really know what they're thinking about as of yet, but we are part of that team, and so we're holding off on this and not starting to design next year until we get more certainty on how this whole, how 900 and Semamish and this whole 12th Avenue may interact with the park. So more to come on that. We hope to have that work done, I think, in, within the next year. So, so at least some, some better direction on what that state park entrance might look like and how it would fit with this. So I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna go through all these, and I'll be happy to, so if you could just hang on to your thoughts and questions, we'll come, I'd be happy to come back to any of these, I just wanna get through them fairly quickly. So this is, so this is the one you're very familiar with, this is the project that's under construction now. Sheldon on the spot, we plan to have this done by the end of this year. He's nodding yes, so, so that's the plan. And so that's gonna be a major, talk about north-south connections, this is gonna be a, a new significant east-west connection, connecting Eastlake over to the whole Costco area. And, and as you can see, there's a couple of projects I'll talk about here. This is the one I was just talking about. It fits in with this one because it's the other end of it, it's where, it's where this whole system connects on the, on the west end. And then there's another project that's a north-south connection here that I'll talk about in a minute. But this is an important, important new corridor, providing all, all modes of circulation in an area that, it's brand-new, so that doesn't, doesn't have that now. And so here's the other piece of, so this is where I was just talking about here, and this is a project, 221st Place, 62nd, of course, is right here. And this is that, that difficult stretch of roadway that comes down from, is that Taco Time, Taco Bell, Taco, Taco Time? So it's that stretch of roadway that is very under-constructed now, so this plan is to have a full roadway construction there, sidewalks, bike lanes, parking, the whole, the whole deal there. So that's, that, we think that this piece along with the 62nd project and the piece over here on the west end will make a really great system and connect this whole area much better than it's connected now. And then if you think, looking forward to having this other connection here, we're starting to really tie together this part of town. So now we're up in the Highlands, and this is a, this is kind of a cool, it's kind of an interesting project because we had initially talked about a signal at Park Drive and Central Park, and that initially was the project. But what are, what we've learned from our work in the Highlands is that there are greater needs than just looking, putting our blinders on, so to speak, and just looking at this intersection and looking at the signal, we know that this whole stretch of roadways, whole stretch of park is of a concern. It's a school, there's a lot of kids there, there's a lot of congestion, there's conflicts with cars. So, so we are looking not just at the signal here, but also likely a mini roundabout and improvements to Park Drive and, and in this area. So we're broadening the scope a bit because we know that it's not just what we do at that intersection, but it's what we do along that Park Drive corridor adjacent to the school that's really gonna have an impact, to make it a better, safer place for, to have a school and to have kids and parents and all those conflicts that happen. So Front Sunset Intersection, that is a project that has been on our list for some time, it's part of our concurrency obligation, it is a project that was recommended out of the IJR. It's, the basic project is constructing turn lanes. Currently, there's just a one lane in each direction on Sunset, so this would construct a turn lane so you could be able to turn and go through on Sunset. Doesn't make any improvements to Front, per se. It does, this project does require eliminating a couple of parking spaces, I wanna say three or four, on Sunset in here and possibly over here. So there is that, we understand there's that downside, the improvements are good, the loss of parking in downtown, maybe not so good. So Gilman, you're, hopefully, just saw our survey, came out, I think, last week. We've had a huge number of responses, I think over 300 so far. So we're really excited about this. This project is, is the preliminary corridor study for this corridor, basically from Front to, to 900. And this is a Gilman, as you know, is a, is a corridor that's been pretty much unchanged, I think, since probably about the '70s. And so it's a lot of strip '70s type development, lots of driveways, lots of conflicts. And so it's a lot of strip 70s type development, lots of driveways, lots of conflicts. We know that Gilman in the future is not going to be what Gilman is today, there's, there's the Central Issaquah plan, there's projects like Atlas that have already been built, and likely to be additional redevelopment along here. We think this is a great time to start talking about what Gilman should be in the future, and we're excited to be doing that with the community. It's much easier to get in front of something like this than to be playing catch-up as properties redevelop. It's very hard for staff to figure out how to condition properties that redevelop if we don't really know what we're trying to achieve on Gilman. This also ties into, you'll be looking, if you haven't already, this, the Park's strategic plan is looking at non-motorized corridors that run east-west in this same part of town. So there's a lot of, we're working closely with Parks on this project, and so it's pretty exciting. More to come on that, we're just getting started on a very preliminary design. Council is very clear, don't come in with options, come in with an open mind, so that's how we're approaching the project with the community. And then you're very, probably very familiar with this project, this is a project that we did a lot of work on last year to come up with, to confirm, I would say, our preliminary concepts for this part of Newport. Lot of concern in this part of town with the neighborhoods and the impact that new development's having along there, so we've worked very hard to build some relationships with that neighborhood, with those neighborhoods, and I think we've done a pretty good job. We are now moving forward with final design for that project that will take the next couple of years, and then will be ready for construction. Well, we can talk about dollars here, if you're looking at your lists, a lot of what I'm just flipping through fairly quickly are some fairly big dollar projects. And then the other, the other project that we are very excited about and working on design as well is, is a project that's been on the books for a while, we have some grant money for this, this is Newport from Maple to Sunset, so includes three roundabouts, and again, improving a road that, and I guess I'd call it more of a, an older road into more of an urban corridor. So, well, we're going to, we've already have a preliminary design that we've figured out a few years ago, so we're starting with that, and again, engaging the community on this effort as well. So this one isn't quite, this is a little misleading, this graphic, we're going to, I'm going to need to change that, because it looks like we're taking on all of Westlake-Semamish Parkway roadway here, and that's, that is not accurate. This is something that we're thinking about long-term as needing to be done, but specifically, this is the pinch point project, it's got approximately a million dollars budgeted for it, and it's just to look at this area right here and to come up with a design and, and construction of bike lanes and sidewalks in this area that don't currently have, they have very poor to nonexistent, non-motorized connections here. We're able to pick, the, the, kind of the cool thing on this is we're able to piggyback on the work of the state, they're building, they're using the shoulders to create an additional lane along I-90, and as they do that, they'll be rebuilding a sound wall along this portion, and as they're doing that, they'll be moving that sound wall to give us enough space to get that, those non-motorized facilities. So that's, that's a, although it's, it's not this whole project, it's an important piece here, because this is a real constraint for all of the folks that live here trying to get over here to the state park, et cetera. So we're pretty excited to be able to, to, to join together with the state to take advantage of the work they're doing to get something that, that will really help us. And again, a project you're probably very familiar with, we've talked about for years and years, as it's, as I've been, as it's been explained to me, and it's time to move forward on it. So we, what we had is essentially 95%, 100% biddable plans ready to go here, I don't know what that was, about six years ago, something like that, and we weren't able to figure the funding out for that. So now we're taking those plans, we're doing a little bit of work to upgrade them to meet all current standards, especially stormwater regulations, and just confirm that we have a design. This project that we can build, this project issue, for, for those of the, those of you that aren't familiar with, realigns or aligns the driveways on both this side and this side of 43rd to create a signalized intersection for Providence Point, because currently it's offset and not very safe. And so we have this project that we're anxious to move forward with, we'll have, the good news is, we'll have the design for this complete in the next four to six months, so we'll be ready to build it pending funding. And then Black, this is not a roadway improvement, but this is retaining wall repair along Black Nugget Road, this is the giant, King County constructed, I believe, retaining wall. Yeah, so, so, and it's, it's, every time you drive by, I'm sure you notice it's in, in needed repairs. So this is a project to, to give it, make it safe and stable and, and make the needed repairs. There has been, my understanding, there's been some talk about a developer looking at, I think, a hotel in this area, so not quite sure where they are on that, but this is, this is our project, and we believe that it needs to be moved up to, sooner than later, because we don't want to, we don't want to risk losing the integrity of that wall. And then, I mean, just, I think I'm getting to the end here, three trails crossing, this is the, this is where the streets Rainier and, and Juniper come in at a kind of a goofy angle at Gilman. As you know, the developer is putting in a signal here and making improvements on the north side of Gilman. What this project is, is to finish that, so they're only on the hook for doing the north side. What this project would do is finish the improvements on the south side, and that, this would be a city project. And so 43rd Way-Eastlake Roundabout is taking the slip lane that currently is, is built into the roundabout and taking that back as a, as a non-motorized pet and bike facility and, and rebuilding it as that, which, which is a much better, much better use of that, of that real estate, we, we feel, and, and makes it safer for pets and bikes, and it's not, it won't, won't negatively impact the roundabout. So those are the, those are the above-the-line, as we like to say, projects slated for the next six years. To be totally upfront, there's, there's clearly more projects and more money than we have funding for, but this is, if you look at the list, this is how we've laid them out, and we'll need some creative ways to pay for them, and we're, we're always looking for opportunities for grants, which will pay for portions of them, but there's still some fairly significant shortfalls in the overall dollar. So that's, those are the projects, and I'd be happy to, oh, let me just give you one other thing here, just to schedule, so you know what we're doing, and so any folks listening understand the process. So this is, this, the sixth-year TIB has been to the Planning Policy Commission last week, I took it there last week and heard their comments. It's with you tonight, we'll be talking to the Chamber Government Affairs Committee tomorrow, and then public hearing with council is June 4th, with a proposed adoption of two weeks from that on June 18th. And then, once we have council adoption of the TIB, we would be submitting it to the, the regional partners, primarily PSRC and WashDOT, which is a requirement. So with that, I think I'll stop and take any questions or comments you may have.
Oh, but before we get into that, I've got a process question, because as I read this, it, it says it's coming to us for informational purposes only, you're just looking for anything we see to take as a comment, because it's going to go to the council over everything else, so it's just...
I'm, I'm giving you a, I guess I'm giving you a, a preview of what's there, and to help answer any questions, and so that, so that we can be successful at the, at the public hearing on the 4th.
Great, all right, thank you. With that clarification, comments?
I have a really simple one, but I think everybody wants the 60-second, 62nd Street project to wrap up, for if no other reason, to have the 4th Street underpass back. So you talked about the TR-008, 221st Place Southeast to 62nd Street Southeast, that's the Taco Time one?
Yes.
So is that going to extend all the way to Gilman and, and also improve the, the pieces of 4th Street that go under the freeway, or not?
That is only from...
62nd on?
From 62nd north to 56th.
Okay.
Yes. Recognizing there's that other piece there, for sure.
Yeah, there's, I mean, it's, it's better, I mean, certainly the, the piece south of 62nd is better than the piece north of 62nd, but it's not, not awesome.
So this, yes, that, this is not, this project would not look south of 62nd.
Right, thank you.
So if I could add a little bit to that, the 4th Avenue between Gilman and 62nd, it's constrained underneath the interstate, and so there's no ability to expand it or widen it because of the interstate, the foundation supports for that overpass, there's no room.
And you don't want to take the interstate down?
Not on that project.
All right, I have a couple of quick questions, one of which is, there's one under the line you didn't mention, is, is funded in 18, and that's the Front Street, Streetscape.
Yep.
If you can say that fast, for $156,000, and that's, that's already approved budgeting for 2018. I had, then...
Would you like me to speak to that, or?
No, no, okay, I just, I just want to mention that, because it wasn't, because that's something that is, is funded already, because we had discussion on council with that. I do have a couple of questions, I know you have to draw the line where you draw a line, but the three trails crossing improvement, TR-038, there's not showing many, my understanding, that signal that's going in, it's not in yet, and I'm surprised it should be going in, but my recollection of the agreement was the city had to put money into that, so I'm not seeing that money showing anywhere there, so I'm trying to figure out where that is, because there's like, what, 300,000 or something?
350,000.
350,000?
That was part of that develop, developer agreement, right.
Development agreement, right, so I just wondering why that's not showing in there somewhere, because that hasn't been, hasn't been spent yet.
That is a good question, I'm not sure, we can, we can get back to you on that.
Okay, all right.
This is not, this is not, yeah, this is, of course, the only, the, what you're seeing here is, is the budget for just the south side of that, south of Gilman, if that makes sense.
Right, but yeah, I'm just, but, but that's a project we, we have...
We're investing money in the intersection.
Yeah, right, we got money, we got our money, and it wasn't all on the developer, unfortunately.
Correct, yes, you're right.
All right, then I guess I want to bring, one that's below the line, I just want to talk about a little bit, and that's TR, the last one on the first page, TR-044 Adaptive Signal Control System, showing, you know, nothing at all till who knows when. And, and I think that is something that I will be fighting for, to bring that up sooner, because that is one of the one things we, we can do without actually building more lanes that I think can help our traffic situation, at least to some extent. So I think that's a really important project, and we need to fight to bring that up sooner. And I will be preaching that from now till cows come home. All right. So I guess, just bringing that up. And then the other one, the one that cut my eye, and I, I read it, but I didn't remember if it was, TR-021 Northeast Dogwood Street Road Widening? What stretch of Doug, we just redid all of Dogwood, what, what are we talking about there?
No, what we did was Northwest Dogwood, and so it's a similar project on Northeast Dogwood. Northeast Dogwood is east of Front Street.
Right.
We did Northwest Dogwood, west of Front Street. And so it's a similar project to that of Northwest Dogwood, except doing it on Northeast Dogwood.
Okay, all right. Okay, I didn't catch the east there, sorry, that was my error. Okay. All right, I think that's, that was, those were my questions. Yeah, those are mine. All right, anything else?
Yeah, you made me think of one more question. So the Front Street and Sunset, you mentioned it's going to, adding turn lanes is going to change the parking, is it, would it also affect the Front Street Streetscape, or is it...
No, it's, it's the, the improvements are primarily, or maybe exclusive to Sunset, don't, don't affect Front.
Then I had one other, which is not above the line, but Adaptive Signal Control System I saw is here, it was listed, it doesn't have a project priority or a project score, but...
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's Mr. Ramos's comment, too, I think perhaps that needs a little more work, but it's out there, we're, we're not planning to do it in the next six years, at least as currently shown here.
Okay, so that's sort of a to-be, to-be filled out later kind of placeholder?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm interested in Adaptive Signal Control, and it does say citywide here, so I'm just interested to hear more as that evolves.
So, so if I could elaborate a little further here, I appreciate the council's perspectives on that project, as well as other projects here. Just a quick reminder, the TIP is a non-prioritized document, even though it shows the dollars for certain projects in the first six years and then others not. The place where the council is going to have a lot more leeway is when it looks at the update of the capital improvement plan, and that's where you'll be able to roll up your sleeves and go, okay, now let's move some projects forward in the priority, funding, things like that, because what this list does really is it provides the city with an eligibility to apply for grants at the state and at the federal level, otherwise we wouldn't be able to fund half of what we see there. So the prioritization really comes in the CIP, because that's your budgetary guidance document.
Thank you for that. I, that does make me, though, have another question, because I do see that there is project priority and some are deferrable in, in the document that we had, some are deferrable, some are desired, so there is, and that's, that your office's broad level priorities?
That's actually a relic of the previous CIP adoption, and so the next major update of the CIP for transportation, as well as all the other capital that the city has, is going to come up in 2019, in which the administration is going to start a public process in 18 to start to get some feedback and input from the community on what projects are important, you know, which ones are desired sooner than later, are there additional projects, are there projects that should come off the list? And so that process is going to start later this year in preparation for the major update in 2019, for 2019 to '24, I think it is, if I, if my math is correct.
And I, the other part of that, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think that some of that, it is a relic from the, from the previous budget, and part of the deferrable and the, the numbers and the ranking came, it was kind of a complicated formula that came out, how projects met various council goals, and I, I don't really want to get into it too much, because I don't understand all of it personally myself that well, but that's where the deferrable and the preferred ideas came from, is from that budget exercise from last year. And Sheldon's absolutely right, that, where the council, where you all come in on this is, is as we talk about budget and how we should rank these projects. The other thing that we know that we need to move forward on, that's, that's very important to us in, in Public Works, is a master transportation mobility plan, which will help, which we know is out there that we want to get started on, that will help us prioritize and rank and rank projects as well. So that'll, that'll, once we get that going and completed, that will give, help us understand much better how these projects fit together, and which one should come first, and which one should come later. And I was just going to make one more comment on the, on the adaptive signal. So I think there's a lot of value to that kind of a system. Bellevue has one in place now. And I live in Bellevue, so I get to use it. I think that my experience and what I've learned from that is it, it does a pretty good job in sort of the off-peak times of managing traffic. It's, it's a little challenge when things are very congested and saturated. An adaptive signal isn't, system isn't like the magic bullet that's going to get traffic moving. So, but it does have value, and there are other agencies in the region that are using it. So that's why it's here.
Any other last comments? All right. So we'll talk more about this at council. So this is just a preview. All right. Go ahead.
I just want to add one other item. Council member Ray was asking about the map and the graphic. And the map and the graphic is contained within Agenda Bill 7599. That was on the city council's May 7 agenda. For whatever reason, that agenda bill was not incorporated into the infrastructure committee packet. But the map is at, like, the second to last page in that whole agenda bill portion of that packet. So the map does exist in your packet.
And I just, just, I'm going to add one more thing, not to, hopefully not to confuse anyone. But there, in reviewing this, and we're always trying to get it exactly right and accurate, it looks like there's a project, if you look at the very bottom of your list, on the second page, you'll see it says Northwest Mall Street, and then 13th Avenue Northwest, and 15th Avenue Northwest. We were looking at this the other day, and I believe that there's, should be one more project in there called 11th Avenue Northwest. So we're going to confirm that. And the reason that's important is because it's part of our concurrency model. We're currently working to update that model, and it's important to have that project listed. So if, in fact, it doesn't show up, it's not embedded in any of these other projects, and we need to add a project there, it would probably come in just above the 13th Avenue, called 11th Avenue Northwest Improvements, that I don't want to, I don't want to sneak anything by anybody. I'm just, full disclosure, that's a project that needs to be on the list, that doesn't look like it's on the list now. So doesn't really substantively change anything. It's a project that's, it's, it's another likely developer-constructed north-south connection in the, on the west, west end of Gilman, like 13th and 15th. It helps complete the grid on that part of town.
Thank you. Any last comments on this one? Seeing no public around, I won't ask for public comment. With that, I think we wrap this up, and we'll talk more about it at council meeting.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that leaves us with our last agenda item, which is project updates. Is there anything, we all have it in our package, but is there anything you'd like to highlight in particular this time around?
There is. I would love to highlight the Gilman Boulevard project. I have a card here that's two-sided, that is going to be going out to businesses along Gilman Boulevard and so forth, and other places, to encourage public participation, as well as business owner participation in the surveys and so forth, as well as, it's announcing a public meeting for the community, I believe it's July 9th, or July 11th, sorry. And so it's exciting. We've started the, the survey. As Kurt mentioned earlier, we've received over 300 respondents already. And so it's encouraging. It's been less than a week, and we're getting a lot of feedback. So it's exciting to get that kind of feedback so fast, and embark on this process to identify what that corridor is going to look like into the future. It's one of the things that's going to shape this community, especially in the central area. So I wanted to highlight that. I think it's really good. And then I guess if there's other questions, I guess one other thing I'd like to highlight, I know earlier Matt Ellis spoke about the Eastlake-Samamish Parkway Drainage Project. I want to highlight one other one, which is the Spar Water Project, which is the reservoir transmission main and so forth. If you've noticed, over time, you know, we've been working and negotiating with WashDOT. We had an appraisal done a while back. We actually had a very positive conversation between the appraisal reviewer from WashDOT and the city's appraiser with regards to the value of the property. So hopefully, later this year, not too distant future, we'll be bringing something forward to the city council for consideration for purchase of the property. So it looks like things are going in the right direction now, again.
Did that conclude your highlights?
Yes, sir.
All right. Yes.
And Kurt, you mentioned this, but the Transportation Mobility Master Plan, the the status on that one is pending staffing. Is there a timeline for when we expect to hurt on that?
So, so I, not to go into all the details, but we were really close to getting started on that. We had a candidate nearly hired, and we were really excited about moving forward on that. And that didn't all work out. So we're currently figuring out Plan B, and I, I don't know that I can give you an exact date. I do know that we're, we're still challenged with finding a, a good person. We know that's a really key position at the city, and so we're, we're wanting to get a really good fit, a really good person for that position. And the market right now is such that we're just not getting a ton of, a ton of people like that. Plan B, I know I'm not answering your question exactly, Plan B is to hire a consultant and have them help us start with that. So my hope is that we could get that underway this summer, early fall, and get started, at least with a consultant to help us get started on that effort, scope, get a scope of work, so that we can hire a consultant, get going on that. It's also tied to, as you know, the Transportation Advisory Board. And the idea of that position is it would also staff that advisory board. So a few details to work out on how that might work, if we, if we have a consultant rather than, than an actual staff person. But it's a priority, and hope to have more information to share with you this summer, early fall.
Yeah.
Appreciate not exactly answering your question there. But it's important to me, and I know it's important to the community, that we develop that plan. Because as I mentioned earlier, that's going to help a lot of, it's going to help us in a lot of other areas as well.
Right. That, it does answer my question. I know that there's complications. But I think that as we are looking at this map with all these little parts that we're improving, they all affect one another, and it's a big complicated system. And so having that master plan, I know, would be really valuable. So thank you for the additional information. I look forward to keeping track of that.
Okay. If that is it, we are concluded. This meeting is adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you all for your work.